Good evening, everybody. Would board members please come to the table? And then we'll get started on the budget work session. Board members, please come to the table. That way, we can get started. All right. We're going to get started on this budget work session tonight. And we do not have a presentation. So the purpose of this budget meeting is for board members to ask any questions that they still have about the budget, but primarily for us to look at any proposed amendments that board members are thinking about offering. Ms. Blumberg has sent us a list of the amendments and follow-on motions that have been sent to her so far. So if you call that up, you can see what amendments have been sent around to date.
When was that sent?
It was sent at six --
Thirty.
Thirty-five or six this evening. So you should have that email.
Did I miss something?
So with that, Mr. Moon.
Is it okay if I ask some questions?
Absolutely.
That I have? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Evans. My questions go to either Dr. Duran or Dr. Presidio, since I don't see Ms. Johnson here. It goes to question number 29, your responses. I had a brief conversation with Dr. Presidio earlier today, but for the benefit of my colleagues on the public, if I could ask some of those questions again and hear from either Dr. Duran and Dr. Presidio.
Sure.
First of all, the last couple of nights I got the public hearing, one of the speakers talked about displacing classes at Herndon site. Whether we're going to have an alternate site for those displaced classes. Hopefully, you understand what I'm talking about. Those, I think they are adult ESOL classes at the Herndon site?
Yes, there are adult ESOL classes.
Okay, so they will be displaced. Could you tell us what that is?
Yes, they will not be displaced. What is happening at the Herndon site, and actually, not just at the Herndon site, through the whole adult high school reorganization, we are combining the traditional ESOL high school program and the adult high school program into one program for a couple of reasons. One, as we looked at both programs, we saw that there was an opportunity for students to earn more credits, number one. And number two, for our transitional ESOL students to have access to all of the coursework that they previously were not having access to. And so at the Herndon site, to answer your specific question, they're going to be co-located there together under the adult high school program and not displaced.
So currently, at the Herndon site?
Right, in the Herndon area, so there's the Herndon--
It's a commercial area. It's a commercial building.
Okay, so let me clarify one thing. So in the Herndon area, so we have the commercial site that you're referring to, and there's also the Herndon Middle School in the back of the Herndon Middle School, there will be also some of the programming there. So in that aspect, it is, there will be students in both of those areas, not just at the commercial site, whereas currently, they're just at the commercial site. And the reason to need to expand to those two areas, the Herndon Middle School in the back area and also the commercial site, is so that we can accommodate the larger adult programming.
Okay. I want to see whether I understood what you said correctly.
Correct.
Because it might be slightly different from how I understood about Herndon site, that at the commercial side, not Herndon Middle School--
Commercial side.
Commercial side, there were currently, there are adult ESOL program through ACE.
Through ACE.
Through ACE.
Correct.
And those classes will be, I think the speakers used a term, displaced, but those classes will be moved out of the site and go where?
Some of them. Some of them will be moved to the learning cottages in the rear of Herndon Middle School.
Herndon Middle School. There are enough available learning cottages in the Herndon Middle School site that just for these adult ESOL programs?
Yes, we've worked with facilities on that, and not all of them are moving there, because some will be, as I was saying a minute ago, co-located with the adult programs that are in the commercial site.
So some of the ACE ESOL classes will still remain at the commercial site?
Some.
Some. When you say some, is that less than 50% left, less than quarter, or?
There are currently five there now, so we're thinking, depending on enrollment, two or three.
Two or three.
Remaining.
Okay. And now, let me go to, let me go, Dr. Duran, your response to my question number 29.
Yes.
That, you know, Dr. Presidio earlier today was very kind enough. He was very patient, go line by line.
Sure.
And so I had a much better understanding of the response, and I appreciate that, you know, Dr. Presidio. But my overall concern is this. Now, we are reducing number of sites.
Yes.
I had a hard time counting existing site, whether it's 10 or 11, or nine, or 12. It was difficult for me to count, even though I'm a math person, it was still difficult to count. So even, just setting that aside, the number of new, number of sites from FI to 19 is going to be no more than four. That even includes adult detention center, correct? We're talking about Plum, a Stewart, and a little bit at the Herndon Middle School, and adult detention center. What am I missing?
And also, in the daytime, there will also be some programming at Bryant and Mountain View.
Bryant and Mountain View. Well, that wasn't in there.
Yeah.
I didn't see that in 29. Did I miss it in 29?
It's not in there, because we already have them there, and so those are continuing to be there. So we will continue to have those for some, but the main sites, you're correct, are the ones that you listed.
Okay, so at the Bryant, Bryant site, is going to be just a day program? There is no evening program?
Correct, which is what's currently there during the day.
Okay.
Only for 18 to 21-year-olds.
Okay. Again, overall concern of mine on this is this, reducing number of sites, we have a huge county, and a lot of students who are using these programs do not necessarily all have a convenient transportation available for themselves to get there. I understand that we are trying to help them, give them more opportunities for them to get high school diploma--
Correct.
--by consolidation, providing more programs that are each site. I get that, except whether the students--
Not only more, not only more programs, but the opportunity to earn more credits--
More credits as well.
--because of the scheduling being that way. So they'll now have the opportunity to earn six to 12 credits next year for the year, which currently, they can earn three to four for the year.
Okay, I get that. My concern is, again, if they're not going to, because of a limited number of sites, reduced number of sites, if they're not going to go there at all, that expanded opportunities will be for naught, because they're not going to get there. That's my concern. I mean, you have a much higher estimated number of students in your response to my question number 29, as a 1,500 to 1,600 overall projected, estimated to be for the next year, which is even several hundred students more than what we are accommodating this year.
That number of 1,500 to 1,600 is eventually what we, not necessarily going to be immediately this fall, but that's some projections we think could happen when we have the opportunity, for, as I said a minute ago, students to now have access to all of their courses. Some of the sites you're referring to, where they currently are now, they don't have geometry, they only have government, they don't have some of the science courses, so they're not able to access the full comprehensive courses that are needed due to the numbers. And so by having it at these mainly three sites that you referenced, which is Plum, the Herndon, and the Stewart sites, we anticipate that this potentially could have more students be redrawn there. We are going to pay very close attention to what you're asking about whether or not students will be because of the transportation. For those that are 18 to 21, we are working with transportation to help provide that. But as we look at the Plum site, we see Lee, Annandale, and some of the Bryant students being able to access there. So it's relatively geographically in an area that's accessible, maybe not perfect as it was before. But again, the key is, the difference is having the courses for them. Then when we look at the Herndon site, we have the eight, the Herndon area has access there. And then at Stewart, we have Stewart and Falls Church, which are currently existing, would have access to there in the evening.
So I'm not going to be laborious on this, but one last request, question and request that I make is that once the registration starts--
Yes.
I would like to have a certain point, I don't know, when does the registration begin for these programs?
It starts in the next couple of weeks.
Next couple of weeks, after we adopt the budget, correct? Okay, next couple of weeks, once the registration starts, I would like to know, before the EORN review, which is at second meeting in July, if I'm not mistaken, I would like to know--
What the numbers are.
What the numbers are, and compare it to last year especially.
At that time, at that time.
At that time last year, see whether we see a growth, even, about even, or precipitous decline in the number.
Sure, we can certainly do that, and we planned anyway on every month, looking at that, to be monitoring that. So we certainly can, planning, we're doing that already, so we will certainly share that with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moon, are you considering an amendment regarding this issue at all?
I am going to wait until I get some numbers over summer.
All right, thank you. I have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes, thank you. This is actually pertaining to Mr. Moon's question, and it also is a follow-on to the questions I raised last week when we first started talking, or two weeks ago when we first started talking about the consolidation of these programs. At that time, I had asked for a crosswalk, and I think you tried to provide a crosswalk, a bit of a crosswalk, in the response to question number 29. Unfortunately, I don't think that it's detailed enough for us to really understand what is happening here. And so I'm going to try again. What I'd like, and you don't have to answer it right here, I'd like to have a crosswalk that says something like this. These are all the different locations and the programs and the number of students in each of those programs at each site today. And this is where we are funneling those or realigning those programs into these sites, and we expect them to, and daytime sites, nighttime sites, and we expect them to have this number at each one of the sites, so that we can actually have a much clearer view of what you're doing.
Okay.
Because it makes it, we're getting a lot of questions in the community, and we have people coming out and speaking, and I don't feel capable of actually adequately answering their questions. There's a lot of unrest, especially for our adult English language learners that are also really pursuing literacy. And so we need that level of clarity, if possible. The second question along the same lines is, you mentioned that some of these programs will be in commercial space, and--
One.
Pardon me?
One of them.
One. So I would like to better understand the economics of them being in commercial space versus using our own. So for example, if it turns out that it is more economic to have them in commercial space rather than purchasing new trailers, or repurposing trailers, or possibly moving people out of locations where our K through 12 students might be benefiting from a classroom, but instead, we're using it for other purposes, then we should be looking at that as a possibility, because these are adults.
Yes.
So they have a different--
We can share that with you. The reason why we're in the one commercial space is there was already an existing contract for that space through 2020. And so we wanted to utilize that appropriately, but to answer your bigger question, we can provide you more clarity.
And if I may, Dr. Duran, one of the things we did as a team, we brought in our facilities architects and analysts, Mr. Steen, his staff, to see what was the most cost-efficient, effective way to accommodate not only the program needs, to Mr. Moon's question, which would be provided on the actual use and the use that had been historically, but also by bringing in the partners of ISD and all the special programs, to make sure that, at the end of the day, we were all in agreement that this would be able to accommodate and provide other offerings in other parts of the county that previously had not been provided.
Right. No, I appreciate that. It's just, it's very hard with the chart that was provided to understand what is actually happening here. So if you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. And so that would be our first added question. I did ask Ms. Burden where we were on answering questions, and I believe she feels that all of the questions have been answered, Mr. Smith or Ms. Wiggington is, is that correct? Do you feel that you've now completed all of the answers to all of the school--
So we currently have, I believe, two board of supervisor questions out, and then one unanswered question that we just received.
That you just, okay. So board members, if you had any questions that you feel have not been captured, you know, please get it to staff as soon as possible. And I do know of one that I did not see, which Ms. McLaughlin, who's not here tonight, had asked in connection with the BA lanes, to if every, I believe the way she put it, but she can ask it herself if she hasn't already put it in writing, she wanted to know if people who move from the BA lanes to the master's degree lanes, what would that cost us? And I believe that that's a question that some other members have asked in various forums. So, right, long-term cost of teachers moving from the BA lanes to the master's lane, so--
We'll follow up with those next steps and see if we can get that question answered. We'll go back and, again, check the next steps and work with staff to get that answered.
Okay, that sounds good. I have Ms. Palchek to be followed by Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. Before my original questions, I have a quick follow-up to Mr. Moon's question for Dr. Polu and Dr. Duran. When we get the information on the changes to the program, A, is it possible to also include by location where the ACE classes, and if we work with other community partners to provide adult ESOL classes, will also be offered, so we can kind of see geographically and maybe what their enrollment was this year as well?
Yes, because this is specifically the questions Ms. Corbett Sanders and Mr. Moon are raising. We're not about ACE specifically in terms of the programming. This is with the adult high school and the transitional ESOL high school program. We do have ACE classes that are English, for ESOL, that we can also provide that as well. There are actually two separate programs, and this, the amendment, and the question 29, and the budget considerations were not around ACE. It was around these two. But we can show that as a comparison, because it will show other locations.
Okay, that would be helpful. And do we generally have students who go from those ACE classes to the GED or the high school classes?
Sometimes, but most of the individuals who would be pursuing a GED or a diploma would be in the adult high school program, not in the ACE program, but certainly, there are times that does happen.
And so there are students in that with Level 1, 2, and 3 who go straight into the high school program?
The students Level 1 and 2 that are pursuing ESOL, for the most part, in the transitional ESOL high school program, they would then, the way we had the system set up, would go from there to the adult high school program, not to ACE. But now, they'll all be one program. And when they were in the transitional ESOL high school program, that's what I was saying earlier, they did not have access to geometry, they did not have access to science, and they only had access to government. So it limited their ability to really pursue a high school diploma. Now that they'll be part of the adult high school program in these three sites, they will have access to all of the courses, and they will now be able to earn three to, excuse me, six to 12 credits for a year, rather than the three to four that they currently were.
No, and I appreciate that we're moving that direction. I also just want to, you know, ensure that we're not going to lose students because of the changes--
Absolutely.
--and that we'll--
That's Mr. Moon's concern.
Right. So I don't know, do we have any, have we interviewed them, done any focus groups with existing students to kind of understand the impact on them, or what changes they would like to see?
Yeah, I think, first of all, students are very excited about the new courses, and that the fact that so many of the students fall in this middle ground, in where they were transitional ESOL high school students, perhaps ready for geometry, ready for other social studies or science courses, but weren't able to take them because we didn't offer them. And by the same token, we had students at Fairfax County Adult High School who had lower levels of English skills, but didn't have access to all the ESOL services that necessarily we had. So by merging the programs, so the students that we've spoken with are very excited about that. I think, to echo what Dr. Duran said, in terms of the locations, this will be a shift for them, for some students, to have to go to different locations. We've tried to make the locations easy enough for students, and as Dr. Duran said, we're working on transportation. So I think they're excited about the changes.
And on the flip side, those students who've been attending the adult high school, there wasn't really a lot of access for them in the Stewart or the Herndon areas, for the adult high school. Transitional ESOL high school, yes. But now, with having those sites be at the Herndon, the Stewart, and the Plum area, you're going to have many adult high school students have access in the Stewart and the Herndon areas that previously did not, towards those fuller comprehensive offerings of courses.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Should I also ask my other budget questions?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you. And my others, and I know it's, I've been trying to figure this out with staff as the new budget questions came in, and I know we're, I'm trying to put one more motion amendment together. So my question is based on one of the budget responses, looking at the IAs who were grandfathered in, and who, right now, are not at parity with the BA step we've added for the grandfather BA lane teachers. So do we have, could I confirm that we have a cost analysis of adding that one step for the IAs at the top of the scale, and if there is place in the budget where that could currently come from?
Yes, we had employees on the CIS scale who were grandfathered similar to the teachers that were on the BA lanes. There were 298 of those employees that fall in that category. The cost to provide another step for those employees, similar to what the board has shown for the teachers that are grandfathered on the BA lanes, is .1 million dollars. At mid-year, we had set aside a bonus, or an option for the board to consider for those teachers that were on the BA lanes, and we set aside 1.1 million dollars. When we costed what it would be for those teachers to get a step, it's actually 1 million dollars. So there's .1 million available, should you want to use that, towards granting a step for those individuals that are on the CIS scale.
And to clarify, that would be one-time money for next year's budget. We would then have to work in the FY--
That's correct.
Twenty budget to make that funding permanent.
So, correct, so similar to the teachers, that is recurring, a recurring cost that we're using one-time money for.
Okay. So I would like, and I'd love to have this conversation with my board members, but as I discussed, at this point, I would like to bring forward another amendment to set aside the $100,000 from the one-time funds that are, were already set aside for the BA lane, to provide that one step for the grandfathered employees on the DIS scale, to provide parity between the DIS scale grandfathered employees and the BA lane, I hope that's correct, grandfathered employees, and then to continue to work as we look at the BA scale for the future, wherever that amendment goes, to also look at our IAs. Because I know we have many special ed IAs who are very important, as well as in our kindergarten, so I hope--
So our staff can work with you on the amendment--
Perfect.
--prior to next Thursday?
Okay, perfect. And as soon as I have it, I will definitely share it out, but I would love to hear from my colleagues, if you have any questions or comments on that. I have one final question, sorry, for staff. I believe last year, I believe Ms. Hines asked the question of providing a 1% bonus, one-time bonus, to our employees who were at the top of the scale, who were not seeing an MSA, and were not seeing any increase last year. I believe that the same thing is happening this year, so I would like to add a budget question to get the cost of providing a 1% bonus to our employees at the top of scale who will not see an MSA or any increase this year. And I guess who those employees are would be very helpful.
Absolutely. We can provide that to you in the form of a budget question. We would have, just for the board to know, because we are applying a 1% MSA to Schedule H, the CIS scale schedules A, B, and C, any employees that are on those scales would see at least a 1%, except for those that are grandfathered, which are the 298 people that I just spoke of. We would have employees on the teacher's scale that would be top of scale. So what I would be bringing back to you is the cost of a 1% bonus for those teachers that are at top of scale. And just to clarify, Ms. Palchek, we would have some employees that are in a hold step, so we have some at tops of scale as well as a hold step, and we can differentiate the cost between those two as well.
Okay. And do we also have the estimate employee increase in, sorry, the employee side of benefits for next year, what the cost to employees would be, just to see, so if they are not seeing an increase, also to know what the increase will be in their benefits for next year? I'm just, I'm hoping to see for the employees who are not currently seeing any increase in-- in salary for next year, do we have the estimate, I guess, average increase in their cost for their benefits for next year? I don't know if we've seen that already. Because I know healthcare costs, I believe are, there's an increase next year.
Let's see. Do we have, do we have an answer for that or we'll get back to you?
And that can be a follow, that can be a budget question.
We can get it for you tonight.
Just with the other information, that would be helpful.
I get what you're asking, those that aren't getting a raise. What's the actual additional benefit cost that they're paying for next year? So you can have an idea of, yeah.
Thank you. At the end of eight hours of teaching, you're with me. Thank you.
Okay, just so we know where we are, Madam Clerk, are you keeping track of the, you are keeping track of the budget question so we can take a look at the, at the end? Okay. So I guess what I would suggest doing is, since Ms. Palchek has talked about one amendment that she planned, you planned to make that amendment?
I was trying to get, yes.
Okay. Does anybody want to comment or ask a question about that particular amendment?
Or should we save that? I don't know.
Well, I just, I'm just thinking that it might make sense to discuss each amendment as people are raising them. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. So on the amendment to give the IAs who are at the top of the scale and the first thing you mentioned, right? And to give them parity with the folks on the BA lane who were giving a little, a boost this year. It's good news that the money's already there. We don't have to take it out of something else. So I think that's good. What I wonder is, our strategic approach to all of our compensation decisions has been to make sure that we are, you know, hitting the market, right? So, and I think that's why we find people at the upper end who, you know, are kind of getting short shrift because they're already above market, right? So, and I have no idea, if we, if we do this for the IAs, and it seems like a small enough thing to do, I probably will support it. But does that go against, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure that I have really paid attention to the IA market.
Could I add one thing before we do that? I meant to say is, my understanding is, as we work to implement this new scale, our MSA is currently incorporated in the scale. And so for at least two years until the scale is fully implemented, not forever, but for at least two years, we're going to have employees who are at the top and are seeing 0% increase to their salary. And so I just wanted to clarify that my
So, Ms. Hines and to Ms. Palchek, so that's for the teachers as we implement. For the rest of our scales, they do see the market scale adjustment. So Ms. Hines is right. I don't have a new calculation for you, but those are designed to be within 95 to 105% of the market. Adding that step, does it take it above that 105 threshold? We would have to look at that. But it does, it does skew it a little bit. But, you know, again, the ideal is to stay between 95 and 105, not exactly at 100. So we have some of that wiggle room year to year.
Right, well, thank you. I mean, I only ask because, you know, IAs are terribly underpaid. I've been an IA, I know that. You know, you can't possibly live on it. And that's probably true everywhere in the region. I mean, they're, you know, some of our lowest paid full-time employees. So even if this bumps them a little bit above where our strategic plan would put them, I appreciate your bringing it because at the end of the day, it's not a lot of money for us or for them, I think, but it's something. So I think I can support it at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I really appreciate your question because this is something that we all have been talking about throughout the year about the IA scale. And it's actually something that a year ago, when you all, or almost two years ago, when this first got presented, the question was, are these people okay with being frozen at this level for this long? Have you gotten feedback from them? And so it is very helpful to understand that it's a minimal cost. However, it's a minimal cost in their salaries. One of the things that I think is important along the lines of what Ms. McLaughlin has asked about the BA scales, and I think in responses to any of our questions, when we pose them as to what is the cost for changing a pay scale, be it hourly or salary-wise, is what's the added cost from the benefits? Benefits, especially when you talk about the retirement benefits, pension funds, long-term. And so if possible, when you provide answers, if you could also go down, provide a second part to the answer, which is the long-term cost of increasing this by 1% is X in our EFRC benefits or FCRS benefits? Because that will help us make informed decisions. And the other piece of it is to have a better understanding, as you mentioned, Ms. Hines, we are trying to bring our salaries in line with the market, is a better understanding of what the market is doing. Because as you say, IAs are frankly, the heart of our classrooms in many cases. So we want to encourage people to pursue these careers, but we also want to make sure that we are able to attract and retain, but not end up having a burden that we can't sustain long-term. Because as great as this year's budget has been, and I'm very appreciative to the Board of Supervisors, I am concerned that the messaging that we had about next year is that we will not get an increase of pennies on the tax rate. And so we really need to think about any additional costs that we're adding this year. We have to look at the long-term impact of it. So if we're going to take $100,000, which I am supportive of, I would prefer that coming out, not coming out of end-of-year funding, but finding it in a sustainable way.
Ms. Schultz, is there a comment on this question or a different topic?
It is, there's a nexus to it. We did, as, if I understand correctly, Dr. Ramey, we actually made the IA scale adjustments to market. That's what's reflected in this change. And so to further, I think you said, further, you know, it would further skew. And so I feel like that's potentially undoing what we've already, the work we've already done to date. Is that what you were trying, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I just, I'm trying to understand what you were guiding us.
Yes and no. And it will change it, but I don't necessarily think it takes it outside of the 95 to 105% range, which I think was what Ms. Hines was, was asking. And it does, you're right, it is a nexus to Ms. Corbett Sanders' question as well because we're in this process of change. And one of the things I think that we're all trying to get to and we're kind of struggling with is that this multi-year process is trying to bring us to market so then every year going forward, we can do exactly what we're talking about. Bring in the market average and make sure that we recalibrate to that market year after year. But with a multi-year project, it's become somewhat of a moving target. And so we're trying to catch up and get us to market as we make these adjustments. And so it's just kind of added some layers to it as we do the, do the work over several budget cycles.
And the economy's improving too, so, and you have a, if you have an improving economy, a reduced unemployment rate, it becomes more competitive, the market changes. I mean, so, so I'm, I share the caution that Ms. Corbett Sanders has of what are the downstream effects of compounding change on change? And that it not be a one-time fund, that we do this actually with sustainable funds. I do have, I was working late with staff, I see a bunch of us have come forward at different, at a different way at the BA lane problem. I was hoping to get some, maybe some information from staff before I published it out to everybody. And I'll talk about it in the regular cycle of whenever I'm supposed to talk about it. But I'm not a fan of the kicking the can down the road. I never have been. If we need to solve a problem, I'd rather us solve it now. And I do, I have a budget question. I forget which budget number it is. It was, it was one of the ones unfortunately that took one of the longest to answer on the BA lane employees who are at the top of their career and are also in the ERC legacy. Therefore, they're kind of like double-trapped. So when it comes time to talk about that, I do have a proposed amendment. I'll wait until my cycle, but I'm
Has that, has that question been answered?
It, well, they're working on it.
Oh, they're still working on that?
They're working on it, but, but my budget question directly goes to the budget question that I'd already asked. I mean, my budget amendment. And, you know, I brought it up a year ago on preserving some of the BA lanes. So I do, I do have, I do share the concerns, I know Ms. McLaughlin's not here, about what the cost is to the overall system of moving people to masters. One of the things I've talked with Dr. Ramey about is, there is no requirement that the masters actually be content-related. So somebody could go get a master's in logistics online and be teaching APUSH and fat lot of good that does their students. So I have, I have a lot of concerns about driving to an MA lane and what that does to us. I am concerned about where these numbers on the IA wind up on the 95 to 105. And I'm concerned about the multi-year implications downstream because I can tell you for sure, not going to be any tax increase next year. So it is what it is and we've got to be planning now. And I'm on the fiscal restraint side, so.
Mrs. Strauss?
Great, thank you. First, I just have one follow-up question on the ESOL, adult ed, and high school program in Herndon. I am assuming that what we're proposing is commercial space on Eldon Street and then the use of more space at Herndon Middle School. Both of those would be within walking distance of a good part of the community that would use it, correct? Yes?
That's correct.
Right. And for those who are not within walking distance, there is excellent public transportation. So if you're coming down Eldon Street or Route 28. So that would be very, very convenient for those people.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, and there's a huge
An expanding adult high school there, which there currently wasn't.
Right, exactly. And so this, this will be, I think, a tremendous benefit to that community, particularly with the, the combination of the adult high school. So, thank you very much. I have a question there. I know that there were questions regarding the proposed position addition to the hearings office. One question is, is there a time limit that we have to meet on resolving hearing cases? I think that there is.
There is, and you know, Dr. Lockard is not here tonight. He had a family commitment, a wedding. But there is a time commitment. I can get the specifics as a follow-up for that tonight.
I think it's 90 days. But anyway, I thought that's important. And then the other, I think this question has been asked and answered, that the hearings office staff has been cut in the last couple of years as all of the offices were cut, as we struggled to balance budgets. So I know there is a motion that Ms. McLaughlin is going to offer. On the one hand, we need as much information as we can and certainly we want to serve our students in such a way that there are, there's less need for hearing cases. But I think it's also important that we understand what the real need is because if we are not able to settle cases for students, then sometimes the actual specific program that a student would benefit from, they can't get it until their case is resolved. So I would be cautious to not add this position if in fact there is a real need and that we would in, in essence, solve our cases in a timely way and get students positioned into the programs that serve them well. So that would be a question. And just as I'm listening to my colleagues, we have been told that there will be no tax increase for the FY '20 budget. So I think we have to be careful. You know, small amounts that benefit our employees are always welcome. It would be one-time money and we just have to be cognizant of then what we have to build in for the FY '20 budget. We don't want to have to go back in and undo some of the things that we are trying to do. So, thank you.
So Mrs. Strauss brings up the hearings office and we got an email today from Ms. McLaughlin saying that Ms. Corbett Sanders was going to present her amendment. This might be a good time. Was that what you were planning to do at this point?
Well, since Ms. Strauss raised the amendment, I thought it was important to go ahead and address it because one of the, many of us sitting at the table were a little surprised at the last budget presentation that there was a request for a new hearings officer. But we also know through one of the, I think it was either the Braybrand brief or the infogram, that a new hearings officer was added on April 1st in anticipation that someone was, who has been out sick this year, was going out, was retiring. And so therefore, that position was replaced in advance. So the budget is in addition to the person who just started on April 1st. However, in the information that was provided, we really don't have a full understanding as to what the best way of addressing the challenge of some increases in hearings cases. And if we look at the last question that was asked and answered, question number 34, Dr. Lockard made it very clear that we don't understand what is driving this and that over the summer, there is going to be a deep dive into the data to better understand where the cases are coming from, what's the, what's the genesis of them, whether we could more appropriately address those cases through more intentional tiered interventions. And so that work is going to go on over the summer. And so I thought that Ms. McLaughlin's motion or amendment, which actually doesn't take away the $100,000, but rather puts it as a placeholder until we've done the thorough analysis and had the superintendent come back to this board with the analysis as well as some recommendations on how to intentionally address these needs. I think that it's a very responsible amendment. Additionally, I would suggest that, you know, we put our SOSs in a couple of years ago, but now we also, starting in, with the new budget, we will be adding, let me see, I think it's three new specialists who will be working with the on cultural responsiveness and restorative justice. And so those are all things that are being put in place because we all know that we best serve our children by keeping them in their base schools unless there is a safety and security issue or that we can, we can't meet the needs of that child in the school. And so we don't know how to address this problem until we actually unpack it. And this motion does allow us to preserve the funding while unpacking, unpacking the problem and doing the analysis.
Okay, I have Ms. Hines to be followed by Ms. Kies-Gamarra, to be followed by Ms. Palchek, to be followed by Mrs. Schultz.
Okay, so I have a question for Ms. Corbett Sanders and then I have a comment. So my only question is, as I look at this proposed amendment, I was confused reading B as to whether the placeholder would definitely be used to hire someone in the hearings office. I wasn't sure, looking at it, whether the idea was that it would be a placeholder that might be spent on professional development, that sort of thing, or a hearings office? Or, and so I would just suggest that if the idea is at the end of the day, that 0.1 million will be used to hire another hearings office, we should, you should make that clear?
It is not clear that it will be a position in the hearings office because the analysis of the data hasn't, hasn't been done. What it is clear is that the position or the money will be used to address the concerns of, you know, why are we having these new cases? What do we need to do to address them? So it may be that after the analysis is done, that Superintendent Braybrand comes back and he says, yeah, we did do a deep dive and we need more than the additional hearings officer that we hired on April 1st. But remember But remember, we just hired a hearings officer on April 1st.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. That, that's clearer to me then. So the, although I have to say, B is still not entirely clear to me. And so I, but we can work on that. I think that I, I get and I agree to, to the spirit of this, you know? Seeing that we need to hire another hearings officer because all of a sudden our caseload at the hearings office is growing is concerning, and it was a wake-up call for the board. I agree. When I look at the data that we've already gotten, and I want to thank Dr. Braybrand for already getting us that data, it is alarming, but it also tracks the data that we see from the Federal Department of Education that's just come out right now in terms of disproportionality in our discipline outcomes, in our discipline system. We've known this for a while, and I think it's fair to say that our school system does better than most others when it comes to that. But, you know, this, this is a challenge that almost nobody has really won, you know, has really cracked yet, right? But we still do have significant disproportionality, and I wonder if it'd be possible for the clerk to pull up, I don't know if you want to do this, Ms. Mulberg, but it is question 26 of the budget questions. It's on page 91, I believe, of the budget questions. And that's, that's a chart, oh, it's 92, I'm sorry, 92 of the budget questions. It's cases by race and ethnicity over the last five years. And I think those are just raw numbers when you look at that chart and when you consider the fact that our Black and Hispanic population is, you know, lower, is smaller than our white and Asian populations, you know, together. It's, it's just, it's pretty alarming. I think the community is concerned about it. So I'm coming around to, what I would like to see is that if we are going to use this opportunity to request a deeper dive, I think what we really need to do is look at disproportionality. And I think, I think that's our number one issue. And I, I would like to make that clearer than what is in your amendment. And if I could finish, thank you. I also think that we need, I think we need an independent study. Now, I haven't had a chance to really talk much about this with Dr. Dron or anybody, and I apologize for that. But I know that five or six years ago, the county had an independent study done of disproportionality in their juvenile justice system, and it did give them 2014. Thank you, Ms. Dernikovacs, because those results came to the Skipt Committee, I believe, and.
They did.
Okay. And Skipt Committee has been using some of that data to make some changes in what they do. So I guess what I would like to see, I'm not sure that we should put this position in the hearings office at risk, number one. And I'm not sure that we should put a, this really important analysis of disproportionality at risk either. I feel like we should go ahead and commit to doing both. And so I'm thinking right now, and I know I haven't sent this to anybody, and I'm sorry, but more of a follow-on motion, similar to Ms. Evans about parent liaisons, to put funding for a study, an independent study of disproportionality, in the budget maybe at the end of first or second quarter. Because this is one-time money. It would be, just to do a study. And I, I don't know how much it would cost. So, and again, I'm sorry to just throw this out on the table like this right now, but that's, at this point, my response to your amendment. I, I am with the spirit of it, but I don't think I'm with the, the details of it right now.
So Ms. Hines, you're thinking of a separate follow-on motion as opposed to combining with the amendment that's before us?
At this moment, yes. And I'll draft that quickly.
Okay, all right, well, Ms. Kies-Gamara.
Actually, I'm in agreement with both of my colleagues. I think I come to a slightly different conclusion than Ms. Hines. I am very concerned about the disproportionality. It's quite obvious that the, the numbers are staggering, and they, the percentages have actually been increasing from, for example, I looked at page 92, 2013 numbers, I believe African-American students were 20, about 28%, I can't read my, my writing, and 29% for Hispanics. And, and the Hispanics actually jumped quite a bit to 217, up to 37%, and then in 2018 at 242%. It's remaining fairly steady for African-Americans. I'm not sure if there is a population growth to justify that, but it, it is concerning. I'm, I'm really stuck on something that I've thought, thought a lot about in, in terms of my responsibility or our responsibility on this board, and that is that our budget is really a more, a moral document, and it, it should reflect our policies. I am not sure that Ms. McLaughlin's motion would place getting the number of employees that we need in the hearings office in jeopardy. I'm happy to, to hear input on that, but I don't think that's what this is doing. I think that Ms. McLaughlin's motion is suggesting that as a board, at least as I feel about this, we're willing to do our due diligence with respect to looking at this very weighty, significant, burdensome issue on our school system, which largely ends up being a contributor, and I hate to say that nasty word, to that thing we call the school-to-prison pipeline. I don't take that lightly at all. I don't think anybody at this board takes it lightly. But I think that Ms. McLaughlin's motion, for the most part, and I'm sure there's, could be some clarifying language, captures the spirit of the depth of that concern. You know, I, there's a comment down here about it only being 1% of the students. That's a little misleading, at, at least in my thinking, especially when we know that the children that are being disciplined most often are the smaller percentages. I'm also concerned, and I think I'll, I'll go to my question, which is on page 105, really asking how we've been focusing on reducing these cases and making sure that we're, you know, implementing consistency and, and handling these in a fair way. And it, and it looks, it does look like we need to take a deeper dive. So I'm not quite sure whether, I don't feel that I would be exercising my due diligence or my responsibility to not look at the issue prior to actually implementing the funds for an additional position. I'm also a little unclear. I'm hearing a projection, I think it's a projection, of about 200 more cases for this past year. I'm not sure that the numbers I'm looking at bear that out. So I'm kind of all over the place on this one. When I look at the question that Ms. Teresa Johnson answered on number, page number 94, she talks a little bit about some of the things that we offer with respect to cultural proficiency, another area I think we need to dive into. And I, I think in that three, third paragraph, she was referring to how administrators are required to, to complete cultural proficiency modules one and two. I believe that's a video. And in light of how significant this problem is, the extent of this disproportionality, I think we have a responsibility, and it is my position we do, to look at how we can truly address this. Is my, I would also like to see, you know, how cases have been handled in the past. I believe that two hearings officers are necessary per hearing. Have we had a slowdown in the past? I don't want to project a problem that doesn't exist, and so I'd love to see some numbers suggesting that that's in the horizon. But I have to tell you, this is a heavy burden. I believe that we should treat it as such, and for that reason, I'm not comfortable putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. I think we, we have a responsibility to look at what we're really doing and why. So those are my comments.
So Ms. Kies-Gamara, are, are you suggesting amending Ms. McLaughlin's language or working along the same lines as Ms. Hines?
I, I'm happy to work with Ms. McLaughlin. I'm happy to work with both of them. I'm just not happy to, I'm not, I don't believe that I can say, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting for the funding at this point for the hearings office without understanding more fully. So I, I think we probably all need to have, you know, a little more discussion regarding that. I'd like to get some information with respect to, is this a real concern with respect to holding up cases? Obviously, we need to do things in a timely manner. Based on the numbers I'm seeing, I'm not sure I agree with that. And I'm a lawyer, not a mathematician, so you can show me. I'm happy to listen. But I, I'm, I'm really very uncomfortable with this, and so I'm certainly happy. Did I answer your question? I appear to be.
It does. It sounds like you don't have a separate amendment.
No.
But you, you will work with Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes.
And/or Ms. Hines on, on theirs.
Yes.
Okay.
And Ms. Evans, if I may.
Yes.
From, from the staff here, I would like to direct the board's attention again to the April 2016 program evaluation that we did on discipline. And I will work with the clerk to provide a copy of that study to the board so that you can review that prior to next Thursday's vote. There are some very good recommendations from that particular study on discipline practices, recommendations to the superintendent on disproportionality, and recommendations to the school board on disproportionality. So I'll work to re-post that.
Again, I, I appreciate that very much. I'm looking to see how it's going to happen. We've had lots of discussion. My colleagues know I, that's one of my little, my pet concerns. So I'm, I'm looking for implementation and, as well as recommendations.
Okay, thank you. I have several people who want to speak on this, Ms. Polczek, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Dernikovacs, Mr. Moon, and Mrs. Strauss. So Ms. Polczek?
Yes, and thank you. And I want to thank Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Corbett Sanders for bringing this forward. I, I think it's in light of, I think what we, several of us expressed when this came to us later, very late in the budget season, and, and I'm really channeling Ms. Kies-Gamara and her thoughts tonight. So I guess a couple of questions. First of all, I think that disproportionality is very important, and I, I shared with my colleagues, I, I shared with Ms. McLaughlin that I would want to support the change, her amendment, but want to see that in there. I was very concerned, and she was supportive, I was very concerned by the numbers, the huge, the very large increases in discipline cases in our Hispanic population, as well as the high number of cases in, in our Black population compared to the number of students we have. So I feel like, you know, we've been waiting, and we now have Dr. Duran leading this work, and we have a plan, but I know, and we've been in the community, and there's frustration of it's seeing the discipline hearings office increasing while not really having a plan for accountability for administrators, for schools, not just this training that people have to do, but how are we holding people accountable? How are we holding our administrators accountable? Because we're holding them accountable for test scores, and we need to be holding them accountable for how we address student and, and family and discipline cases. I've heard from many people working in our community that they're really concerned, that they're seeing students and families who are caught in the discipline system and the process, who at the beginning didn't really understand that what they were doing was going to lead them there. And so I think that's, that's my concern. So I would like to know, I'm leaning toward this being something temporary if it's absolutely necessary, but that I think, number one, we really need to see a plan. We need to see a plan of how we're implementing the changes, how we will hold ourselves accountable, and if we can come up with goals. I mean, we want our kids to have goals. We want administrators to have smart goals. What is our goal by the end of this year for our improvement in our disproportionality and how we do, not just cultural proficiency, but what it's going to mean in outcomes? I think that's where several of us are starting to get a little frustrated, is we want to see the outcomes for what we're responsible for. So, I mean, my question is really, what is the impact? If we were to say, pass Ms. McLaughlin's motion, what would be the impact on the caseload? You know, what, because I don't want us to be irresponsible, but if we were to say, no, we don't want to fund this as a full-time additional position, we understand that it may need some temporary support, but we would rather look at independent studies. We would rather look at how are we implementing what was recommended in the 2016 report? We would rather make sure that we're doing more to support our students rather than increasing the discipline side. So I, I don't know if there's someone here who can speak to that, what happens if we don't fund this position?
What I would, would say is, is that, this is, this is what I think, based on the discussions I've been hearing. There's some interest in having the year closed and see the actual totals to the number of cases. We've done an estimate based on where we were at, I think, the end of April compared to end of April at this time last year, and we're up. There's an interest in doing a deeper data dive. We're planning to do that. The equity profile that we're about to launch is going to have a discipline component, and we know we need to dig into that. We're not afraid of looking at these numbers. It's obvious for many of you, this has been a topic, and you'd like to see the school system pick up the pace. I got it, and we're going to do that. I don't have the numbers yet, and I think the spirit of your question is, if we don't have a hearing officer, how many cases are going to go into arrears? How many will we do with just one hearing officer versus, versus two? We typically have two at a hearing. But Ms. Gamara's told me we've had to do a couple at one. Trying to quantify that impact a little bit more so the board can weigh carefully whether to support the hearing officer or take more time to look at data or spend those dollars elsewhere. So we'll work to have that information as best as possible between now and Thursday.
Thursday, okay. So, you know, if, if it is feasible and we're not being, you know, pushing our limits past the ability to meet our state mandated requirements, I would really like to support the amendment, adding the disproportionality in there, but to say we, we need to have, we're writing on this dashboard. I know we sound impatient, but this has been, prior to you, a several-year process of trying to get here, many years, decades for some, of trying to get here. So it's time to just do the work. I'm especially concerned about the rise in our elementary and middle school cases, and so is that an area where we really need to see more support?
One thing the board that you're talking about, and it's tying together all the discussions, this is the social-emotional supports, the multi-tiered system of supports. We haven't implemented it with fidelity. Frankly, we had just started with the state to do it in a few schools, 20 schools over the last year or two. We've got to get it to scale. We have 200 schools. Social-emotional issues are increasing across the Commonwealth and in Fairfax, and we've got to start to put those structures in place, or these numbers are only going to get worse, not better. So I share the urgency. We're going to do it, and I think, I think the spirit of some of this is, the hearing officer, we feel there's a need for it, but that's the reactive. And the board is looking for the proactive, the data dive, the structures, where is the additional support?
And Scott, I want to interrupt you for a minute, because I think the social-emotional is important, yes. But as a teacher, I've seen very well-meaning teachers and staff and administrators who care about the profession, care about their craft, care about their kids, but are, are really, really struggle on the cultural competency, the literacy, the understanding.
Right.
When thing, something really is disciplinary and when something is figuring out how to reach a student.
So we're going to have the equity specialist in each school.
Yes.
We're actually already advertising for those. That's in the budget, those stipend positions. It's, I forget what it is. Is it one for elementary, two for middle?
One for elementary, one for middle, two for high, and three for secondary, and equity lead, which is a stipend position. It's not a specialist, but it's a stipend position for someone to work on the leadership team, unpacking the data, supporting the, the principal and others around what we're doing around these practices. Someone that we can provide additional training for. Ms. Kies-Gamara mentioned our cultural proficiency modules. The first module was a video. The second one was not. It was an in-person one. So we are evolving and developing that because we realize the first one being just a video is not sufficient. But these equity leads will also help us not have it be a video, have it be a person who's at each school to help provide that training that we will help build their capacity of.
Right, no, and I appreciate that. I know, you know, we're just starting. It's, I think it's $700 stipend. It's the first year. So I'm also just not 100% hopeful that we're going to see the change we're looking for in one year.
It's only, it's a start. You're right.
One, one or two other things just to tell the board. Francisco, we just sent a team to Harvard for Equity Conference. Great stuff. We're going to come back and build our own program based on the Harvard. We're going to come back and build our own program based on the Harvard equity stuff here. Not going to send everybody up there. We're going to take those ideas, bring them here. We're going to have an equity specialist, as you know, from the Project Momentum expansion in every region. We're going to double down and get this stuff done. I realize you're frustrated because it hasn't happened. It's going to happen. It is going to happen while I'm superintendent here. Hold me accountable for it. See if it doesn't get better. You're asking about seeing the data get better. If it's not better, then, you know, you'll have to make other decisions. But it's going to. We're serious about it. I talked with members in the community in the last few months. I talked with some folks today. You know, when you're new, and people are trying to figure out what's what, and people are frustrated because they feel they've been playing a waiting game, and they're tired of waiting. And I understand that. And I understand the board feels that way to some degree, too. But we're going to get it done. I want to throw out one other little thing to help maybe this discussion along. You know, day-to-day, I don't know, have every nuance, every moment, but we could bring for your consideration that we would have the hearing officer for one year only, that we could fill as a one-year-only position, and, and, you know, at the end of that year, really take that back based on the data. But again, you all will have to make your decisions and conversation. That's what tonight is for. We'll respect your ultimate.
I just want to finish up. I would support that. I also would like us to, I don't know if Dr. Duran, Dr. Braybrand, if we are creating our own year-end goals for our equity work, I would love for us to start to have real goals so that we can be tracking that. So if there's a way, a best practice for doing that, I think I would.
All of our goals as it relates to equity are what we're connecting to our strategic plan. So when we think about, for example, undercaring culture, it speaks to our discipline disorderly conduct goals. So we're all working, we're working with the school board. I know we're not quite there yet on what those goals are, but we don't want equity goals that are separate from our strategic plan. We want it to be directly connected to that.
That's fine, but I want them to be very specific. I mean, we have testing goals.
They're very specific. They have, we've looked at baseline data. We've looked at what we'd like to see for all of our various subgroups and overall. And I know that's not been finalized yet, because there's still work sessions to be done. But in those conversations, that is where our goals are going to be directly aligned. And then in the equity profile, we're going to be referencing back to our strategic plan in terms of those areas, which is why it's really important that we get them right in the strategic plan.
We're going to have more data on more stuff than you've ever seen before. That's the truth. We're going to be reaching out to you all individually over the next month or so with the final, final phasing of the strategic plan. We've spent leadership team the last three, really, the last six, eight months. As you know, it was one of my primary goals as superintendent to really help prioritize it and get the focus that I think we need to really drive the improvement you all want to see. Fidelity of implementation has been the issue. Too many things not done well. And we need to do equity well. So we'll be doing that individually. And then we're planning right now, we're working with the chair and vice chair around a work session in July, so that you can have a final time as a board to, you know, look over that strategic plan and support us as we would move forward to kick off the 2018, 2019 school year.
Ms. Schultz?
So first, I have a process question. I'm not exactly sure what the flow is here, so I'm trying, I'm trying to follow.
So what I thought we were doing was taking individual amendments and topics and discussing those one at a time.
So are we only talking right now about the hearings?
About the hearings office, yeah.
Okay. So I appreciate, I saw Ms. Mullberg sent us the April 2016 discipline process study. The concern I have here is, we have one budget question, and there seems to be a lot of hither and thither about this one budget question. And for, every single year that I've been on the board, for six years, I've been asking for, and this goes all the way back to a former deputy superintendent, been asking for a regular report on discipline and discipline statistics to this board. In six years that I've been on this board, I've never had one. Any deep dive that I've done, it's been through, like, banging my head against the bloody brick wall trying to get to the statistics. Numbers, raw numbers, don't tell us anything. They don't tell us where it's occurring. They don't tell us the repeat offenders, how many of those are comprised repeat offenders. They don't tell us if this is predominantly in one period pyramid, if this is, you know, kindergarteners through 12th grade. It doesn't tell us anything. This is, again, my relentless pursuit for data in context. Just because there are more numbers in the hearing office does not mean you need another hearing officer. It doesn't, it doesn't speak anything to the scope and to the intensity of what's involved. Every single high school has been given a Sosa. They've been given more resources. We've already fronted that money, and in fact, I tried to claw some of it back, because if somebody can profess to me why Thomas Jefferson needs a Sosa, I'm still waiting for that response. So there, it's a distribution of where we're putting the resources. It could be that some high schools need two SOSAs. But to say at the back end of a discipline process, we need more people to process the kids we've caught, solves a problem in the worst possible way. So I'm going to be a lot more clear. I thought it was clear at the work session. I'm not voting for anything that puts more money into the hearing office unless and until I get a report and I understand what the implication is of having the solution at the back end of the problem. So that's number one. The intensity of what they're seeing in the hearings office is extremely important. Are we talking about a 30% increase in MS-13 and gang recruitment and the complex nature of what that means? Or are you talking about, you know, increased number of sexting? Well, that's a whole different policy solution in terms of the way the board approaches it and where we, we send resources. Again, I don't have any context for that. Just showing me a number and saying, well, there's more cases, so we need more people, is, that, that's a ludicrous proposition. And, and I'm frustrated, and you, you've heard Dr. Braybrand, I, I think, some of it from some of my colleagues, that this comes at the back end of a process, and it's just professing that there's a need without really much of an explanation or a dive into what comprises the need. I, I want to also be extraordinarily cautious about professing from this, from this dais that we are disproportional in our discipline. I want to be very, very careful about that. Until we have a report and we understand what's happening, where it's happening, when it's been happening, I mean, you know, we've had some pretty substantial demographic changes in, somebody said in the last four years, in the last four years. And to, to profess that our SROs are doing anything other than an exemplary job is something I'm not willing to do until somebody proves it to me. And I do, I do not, I don't want to go down that path. I want to respect the work that they're doing. They're keeping our kids safe. And I certainly know that what happens in that back room, we go to extraordinary lengths to, to make sure that anything that's done is done purely on the, the nature of what's been presented to us and has nothing to do with who the student is, where they come from, what they look like. So to me, the high schools already have the resources. Some high schools probably have resources they don't need. Sorry, I hate for the principals to hear that, but some of you got stuff you don't need. And looking at redirecting what we already have rather than piling on top of with more of it at the back end of the process is, is where I am on this issue.
Ms. Darnett Kofex?
Interesting that I should follow Ms. Schultz. I didn't write this while you were talking, but my first point was, what I'm concerned about is the numbers we're seeing are raw numbers, and what we need to do is see the data behind the numbers. So that's, that's my concern. But that was my, that was my endpoint to my comment. I may disagree about the pathway to how we get there. I really, really appreciate what you said, Dr. Braybrand, because this has been a frustration with the board for so long. Ms. Hines had wrote me a note, and I was trying to write you a note back, but I didn't have the time. So what I did is I was doing some research while you were, it was about your question to me about the skip, when did that happen? So in 2014, the skip team did do, did conduct a survey on disproportionality. And unfortunately, what they did see was, it was that Fairfax was not an outlier to what the rest of the country was seeing. We, we were, we were seeing disproportionality. In 2015, though, when skip began, the county developed a disproportionality minority contact response team. They developed their own restorative justice program, which was called Adolescence Accountability Program. And then all of these things kind of rolled in. And I've only been on skip two years, even though I know, you know, we've had other colleagues on there. And Ms. Hines and I were very, very, well, I, I would say, I still say we were very strategic in getting skip started, because we, we wanted to start it with how, you know, what, how, what's affecting the pre-K classrooms and how that just starts to chow out with deficiencies if they don't have quality pre-K. So skip took on some, as I always say, some tentacles and some arms. Some, some, I think in this case, very good. Some are extraneous, and sometimes we get away from our primary mission. But the policy that we all approved, the one Fairfax policy, the one that focuses, focuses on racial and social equity, is a direct result of that study that happened in 2014. So I think we are moving for, moving where we need to be. That's where I come to my last point, where I'm, where I said what I said, stated at the beginning and agreeing with Ms. Schultz. Concerned about what we're seeing are raw numbers. We need to see the data behind the numbers, because that's when we will know how to, how to direct this, to direct what resources. So where I differ, I think I'm more with Ms. Hines on the approach. I don't want, I don't want children waiting and these backlogs to come, and children not to be able to, you know, if we're seeing what we're seeing, and we, we need to be able to, and if staff feels, the staff that's there feel that this position needs to happen, I, I would be willing, as you said, maybe to have it a one-year position and then see where, where we need to be. And I think Ms. Hines, I don't, I don't know if that's, if you agree with that part, but you were also talking about in tandem, making certain that we're working on some of these other things to make sure they're happening. And, you know, so I would be willing to work with you or work with staff in, in any way, whether or not we agree on, whether or not that $100,000 position should be funded or not. I think that can, we can silo that and, and still work on moving forward on some of these other issues. So I think, again, Dr. Braybrand, for this particular, when we, we're talking big picture here about one, where one position has led us. And I think, I think that's okay for a budget discussion, but I still think we, we do need the answer to the question, if we are going to fund this, if we didn't fund it, what would the consequences be for the children that are, have, have committed an offense in, have committed something that's against our SRNR? And, and would their, their, their time out of school, or would the, how would their experience be, be perhaps worse if this position was not funded? I think that needs to be very clear.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Mr. Mark Kofex, as you just asked, very important question, the effect, impact by funding or not funding, you know, what our decision, what sort of impact our decision, one or the other, would make? That, along that line, let me ask you a couple of questions to maybe superintendent I don't know how quickly the board will be able to have in the presentation from, you know, superintendent, and have a discussion about the causes behind, what we can do to reduce the number of cases that maybe refer to hearings offices, or even dealing with the disproportionality, et cetera. But when, when do usually hearings come to the hearings office in terms of a school year? Is that, I, I'm thinking that at the very beginning of the school year, there may not be as many?
Yeah, I, I don't have it. Again, Dr. Lockard had to be away tonight, and he's the subject matter expert, honestly. But
Okay.
From my prior experiences, that the hearing cases tend to pick up after first quarter.
After first quarter.
After first quarter.
After first quarter.
The beginning of the year is usually quiet.
So whether, you know, if you have a little time, you know, before, I'm sure that you will, you know, if you decide to hire one more hearings officer, whether on a permanent basis or a temporary basis, you will need a lead time to hire that person. So probably, we shouldn't be, if you decide to hire someone, we shouldn't be waiting until after, you know, a whole lot of cases come to the hearings offices and be overwhelmed, and that, and the whole process get delays, meanwhile, students, you know, waiting for the hearing to be just, to, you know, to be out of their school and classroom instruction for way too long. That's one concern that I have, is whether, our question is, how quickly you think we can have, you know, this discussion to see whether there is any other different approach that we can tackle this issue?
Yeah. I'm a straight shooter with you guys. There's 5,000 things going on here at the end of the year, and the budget and these questions. I'm going to try to pull back between now and Thursday and try to get most of these questions answered, so you can go up or down.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's the bottom line.
On the, on the.
And, and the reality of it is, staff presented this as part of a budget work session and didn't have the narrative, didn't have the data behind the data. And that's why we're here, spending as much time as we are on it. And I will not make that mistake a second time when we enter something new in the budget without bringing a narrative, without bringing a presentation. That's why we're here now. And now we're spending a lot more time than if we had done the work upfront. And frankly, you know, there's just a lot of balls in the air with things like this. But I think we can get a good crack at getting a lot of your answers answered prior to next Thursday, so you can make a good decision. And we'll work with board members who will be working with staff as you're working on the amendment around this particular topic.
You know, to my colleagues, at this point in time, you know, I'm going to have to give myself a little more time to think about which approach will be the best, especially between, one approach by Ms. Hines and another approach by Mrs. McLaughlin. Again, my major main concern is impact of our decision on the cases. But overall, even more, a bigger concern that I have is, I was trying to get some answers from high school principals the other day at the work session, whether in overall, over the course of the last several years, whether our student behaviors are becoming worse, whether they are all referable to, the cases that are referable to hearings offices or not, whether they are all suspendable offenses or not, whether overall, our student behavior, where is that going? That's my concern. And, and based upon some of the data you provided, I was looking at, I think, question number 25, when I saw, it was only two-year, two-year data, 2017 and 2018, that when I see a number of cases, you know, among those cases that I refer to hearings offices, when I look at the cases for assault, drugs, and we have a gang activity, and harassment and bullying, and threats going up, that concerns me. I was trying to, you know, segregate hard offenses versus soft offenses. I, I could only see disruptive or defiant could be maybe soft, but others, I consider them to be mostly hard offenses. When I see the number going up, that really concerns me. Thank you.
I have several go-bags, but I'm going to take a quick turn myself on this topic. I agree with those who say we do need to understand this issue better. You know, what's, what's actually going on and why the numbers are up now, and the degree, the severity of the cases. I did look at the breakdown that Mr. Moon just raised, and the things that stood out to me, the number of threats, you know, that's an interesting category for us to look at as to what, what does that mean? What exactly does that mean? I appreciate those that brought up the issue of disproportionality. We do need to look at that. So Ms. Hines and Ms. Kizgimara, I will support what you would want to put together on, on that issue. I think it's, it's certainly time that, and Ms. Darnett Kofex, I know you've worked on this as well. So. as well. So we do need to look at that. I will say, most of us remember that four or five years ago, we did a very significant work on student discipline. We did a lot of work on that. And we put the SOSAs in, we reduced the amount of time that students were out of school, we stopped sending kids just on suspensions at home, which wasn't doing them any good and wasn't doing the students and the schools any good. We did significant work, so it's sobering now to see the numbers going up because they did go down. They did go down, and now they're going back up again. It's probably time for us to review this again. Time to review things like parent notification and the role of the SROs and some other issues that I just had raised with a constituent today about some concerns that she has at the school level. I do, however, I get concerned, I don't want us to go back to the time when students were waiting for, and we had a big backlog and they were waiting a very long time to get their cases disposed and decided. So I guess that's what you're gonna bring back to us, Dr. Braybrand, before next week, to say what would be the impact if we didn't do this now?
Right. And I think, look, we're gonna do our best because obviously we've advocated for the resource. If what we bring is not sufficient, you'll not support it or you'll say we need more time. And if, to be honest, if we don't have more time, if we can't get the answers, what I would come back and try to say is, hey, by this time, I'd have it. And that may influence what you ultimately have as your amendment. Frankly, if I can, I would try to even have it before Thursday, and it's already incorporated into whatever work that a few of you who may be working with staff would ultimately do. But I, the truth of the matter is, I have not had staff time to gather my team and go over these specific questions and have a coordinated response beyond answering your specific questions to decide how all this would come together for this particular issue.
But I guess that, for me, would be key in terms of what we do on Thursday, would be to say, you're suggesting perhaps we do have it be a one-year position. If not having that position would mean that we have a lot of students waiting.
Right, right. The consequences question, I took notes. You'd wanna know that.
And perhaps being out of school, then, yeah. If we can wait until the fall, then that's a different matter.
Yes.
So I do have.
And I'll try to have that information for you before next Thursday.
Okay. I have go-bags from Mrs. Strauss, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Ms. Hines. Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. All of my questions have been answered. We just need more information and a balanced approach. We wanna do what's best for kids. We don't want to leave kids in limbo, and we also want to have improved behavior. That's fair. We don't want to have disproportionality. So I think we all have sort of discussed this all the way around, and we need more information to know what's really going on. Thanks. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to the amendment because that's really what we were trying to do, is have a balanced approach. We didn't say no to a hearings officer. What we said was, there's not sufficient information and we haven't done the analysis. If we need to craft it a little bit more nuanced to make sure that we incorporate the need for that deeper analysis, and I think we can also include in there the importance of possibly going to an outside group longer term. But the other piece, Dr. Braybrand, when you're coming back with additional information, I would hope that you would take into account if there have been delays this year, if they have been caused because you actually have had a person out on long-term leave in the hearings office. And so we actually have already replaced that, we've already gone ahead and put additional staffing in that hearings office. So it's not as though you haven't kind of ended up restoring your hearings office to the level that it was for the past couple of years. It's that it had actually, prior to that, been operating at a shortfall. So this is boosting that up above, even though, and so it's almost two hearings officers, not one. And that's even more the reason that we should do this cautiously. We should look at this in a very deliberate manner and look at it holistically so that we look at what is causing the problem, what other possibilities there are to solve the problem, and if there are near-term actions we have to take versus longer term. And so given all of the data that is necessary and the analysis I think this board needs to take, and being very intentful that our budget does reflect the values of this board and the value this board places on restorative justice, diversion first, and really addressing those issues of concern such as disproportionality, if there is disproportionality, the data may look that way. And so we need to do that deeper dive to understand what the data is, and we need to do it not only on a system-wide basis, but on a regional and school-by-school basis. So that's gonna take a little bit more time than what we're gonna have between now and next Thursday. And so I would urge my colleagues to go ahead and to support this amendment. We can flesh it out a bit, but it is one that reflects the balance that Mrs. Strauss was also urging that we have a balanced approach.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah. So in a good news budget year, here we are, talking for almost an hour on a $100,000 item, which, you know, I think it's proof that a budget is a value statement, right? We're digging into this a little bit of it because it talks so much about, you know, kids and what we wanna make sure we're doing well for kids. So not trying to beat you up over $100,000. So I think for myself, I'd be happy to work with Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. McLaughlin on trying to tighten up the "B" in your amendment to get it to the point where I could support it. And it would have to be very specifically and intentionally about disproportionality and primarily about disproportionality, and also make clear when we receive that report, what are we doing about the, what are we doing about the position, you know, and what criteria are we gonna use on whether or not to actually put the position in place? So that needs to be a lot clearer for me to support. I'm willing to work with you on it. But I think also, in the case that that amendment does not have enough support, I wanna have something else to do as a follow-on. And I'll try to work with, maybe with Dr. Duran, on what's the best way to do it, you know? Maybe just asking for, it would be a budget follow-on, but really kind of not so much related to the budget as maybe using some of the Office of Equity funds to do some sort of a study. So anyway, I'll see what I can.
And if I could, in the spirit of, look, I appreciate the hour on this. This is great when we have the time to delve in, and it's delving into an issue almost like if it were a work session on the topic. I know you all wanna do a little work, do a little work, bring us your best thinking, if you're willing to, like on a Monday, and let staff really push, get more, and maybe we'll be in a place by Thursday, we can be more, staff and board could be closer together in whatever amendment would be. And perhaps there are gonna be more than one amendment to wanna have on the topic, but we can work with you all. And I wanna work with you all. I don't wanna spend a lot of time next Thursday on something where we don't have the information to you that you can't make a clear decision. So you've clearly given me the information that you want. I'll get you what I can by next Thursday, and we'll work with staff to help craft the motion so that you feel your views are being appropriately represented.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up one other thing. Thank you to Mr. Smith for reminding us about the 2016 study. That's helpful. I think one of the things I'm gonna do is dig into it and see and maybe ask you some questions about, you know, we haven't moved the needle, really, right? So we have a study with recommendations, and is it just that we haven't had the resources to put in place the recommendations? Or is it just that it's gonna take more time? I mean, so, those are the kind of things that, and also, you know, the proposed amendment talks about tiered systems of support, and that's something we talk about is really important. But do we have any research or data that shows that that particularly moves the needle on disproportionality? So I just want us to be intentional about that particular. So anyway, I don't know, Mr. Smith, I'm not gonna put you on the spot right now. Okay, I'll talk to you later about that. Thank you.
So I have Ms. Schultz and Ms. Kiesgumara, and then we'll go on to another topic.
Just briefly, I forgot to mention, on the issue of a external, any kind of an external report, we haven't asked our own staff for a report. And before going external, I actually think it's incumbent upon us, for once and for all, to ask for the report from our own staff, is set the bar of the expectation that it be a day-to-dive, that it not just be raw numbers, that the, you know, these are the things that I've asked for in the past. When does it happen in the year? Can you anticipate so that we can mitigate instances of referrals to the hearings office in the first place? You know, can you anticipate just ahead of a quarter end, do discipline statistics increase? Just before, you know, semester breaks, are there increases? You know, are there certain times of the year? I mean, I think Dr. Ramey, you know, or Dr. Presidio, I don't remember who, made a tongue-in-cheek about, you know, snow days are not our friends. You know, a snow day can actually, you know, be the beacon of some bad things happening. So that information coming from our own staff, we have the subject matter expertise within the staff to develop that report and inform us. And then that report, then, I think, depending upon what that would look like, would precipitate potentially the need to go externally for a review of things that may appear out of sync in any such report. But I don't want to go around our staff and go external with the assumption that we need something third-party without ever having, you know, the report from our own staff in the first place. So I would support, six years running, a full discipline dive and report with great data that's not just on tables, that is meaningful, meaningful in context to us.
And that's something we could certainly look at. If you think back to the April 2016 report, it was looking at the changes to our discipline process over time. So it was a very specific question, but we could take a different look and work with the hearings office and other departments to provide that report.
I appreciate that, Mr. Smith, because, and this is where, you know, I'm gonna, because she's not here, you know, I actually got, I'm gonna tell you, it doesn't ever, I don't think it ever has happened. I was actually choked up at the Monday work session when those principals were talking, and Principal Thomas, this is for you. You know, the owning of the fact that it was very, very difficult for some principals to come along with a discipline reform that Ms. McLaughlin and I were up to our eyeballs in at the beginning and took, you know, frankly, a lot of incoming that we didn't deserve. And to hear that the dial has been moved and for the principals themselves was huge. That's where the work of this board can make a difference, and they're now seeing in anecdotal evidence to us, we just need you guys to report it to us. It's just time to bring that full circle of that blood, sweat, and tears that went into the discipline reform effort of the prior board. And now that the principals are saying, you know what, we did resist and we did dig in, but we can tell you it's working, there's a dichotomy, Dr. Braybrand, between the proclamation that the discipline reform effort that we did do is working and that we need another hearings officer. And so I think that's what we're asking for.
Ms. Kiesgumara?
Okay. I just wanna clarify because I think I'm hearing an equivalency that may not be real. I think with Ms. McLaughlin's motion, this isn't a forever no. This is her trying to identify, doesn't that sound like a movie? Her trying to identify and address these concerns that we've spent an hour discussing and make a more informed decision. So, you know, Dr. Braybrand, as we look at what the impact is, I'd like to look at the real impact of this amendment. Because I think what we're looking at is how would we impact our hearings office and our ability to handle cases if we deny this request? That's not really what we're talking about. We're talking about taking time to do that deep dive and then moving forward from that point, which I believe really, really needs to happen.
I mean, it's not for me to decide what the board does. You could have one amendment about that day-to-dive and doing it and figuring out directing staff to do that, and depending whether we need to do outside or inside to get that done, we can determine. And then the other is about the hearing officer position itself, whether to do it or not, the scope and length of time to do it, the impact of not doing it. So it might end up being perhaps two different motions. It's for you to decide, but I get it. There's two pieces to it. One's the study of the data, a deeper dive, and one is the issue of the hearing officer herself and the need for it and a stronger case and an understanding of the consequences if it's not there.
Right. The consequences of this particular motion, because I think that we're kind of seeing it as an all or nothing, and I don't think it's an all or nothing. While we're looking at some of this data, I would like to see where, which schools these cases are coming from. I can tell you just based on my visits and in my separate professional life, you see some schools that just have it down and they, you know, they do a really good job of bringing their kids along and not having to overly use the discipline process. Some schools just aren't there. We need to identify where those problems are so that we can have a more targeted approach, which I'm sure we are all trying to do. So I just wanted to make sure that I clarified those two points. And finally, we're talking about impact. There is the impact of, obviously, not supporting Ms. McLaughlin's motion, but also there's an impact on those kids that we are saying, well, we can put somebody in place to handle it for now and then look later. I'm very concerned about that impact. So I'm sure we all are, but I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that, that there is more than one impact here to consider.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesgumara, and thank everybody for that excellent conversation. Madam Clerk, if you wanted to go to the top of the chart, I think perhaps I can go to my amendment. I think it's one of the more, it's one of the simpler ones. I don't know if there's gonna be a lot of discussion on this, but I sent this to everybody today. This I have crafted with the help of staff, a follow-on motion to do our final step for getting benefits for our amazing parent liaisons. As you remember, two years ago, we did the major work. We put them on the scale and got full benefits for those with 30 hours or more. In this budget, we've included those with 25 to 29. The last piece that would put them on par with our food service workers and with our bus drivers would be to go to 20 to 24 hours. Staff has costed this out at about $300,000, 0.3 million dollars to go to this last step. So this would not be for this budget year. It would be directing the superintendent for the next, for the 20 budget year. So that's my amendment. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, Ms. Evans, for bringing this to us. We've had long conversations about our parent liaisons and how important they are to our system. And as part of this, we also know that it's not only the parent liaisons, but the coordinators of the parent liaisons who have regional responsibilities. Some of them used to be in schools and would have qualified for benefits, and then when they became coordinators, they lost their ability to get their benefits. So I would like to see that added. But I actually have a structure question. I appreciate this amendment, but it really isn't an amendment to the budget. It's more of a follow-on motion from my perspective.
It is a follow-on.
Okay, okay. That's what I wanted to make sure, is that it is a...
So I understand you'd like for coordinators to be added into the language?
The parent liaison coordinators, so that those are the regional coordinators for each of the regions, as well as the cultural, the, I forget the exact title, but there were a number of women who fall into this category, but they're no longer called parent liaisons that have...
No, actually, they're all women, but yes, you're correct.
No, actually, they're all women, but yes, you're correct. I should have said people. I apologize.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek.
Yes, Ms. Evans, I would support this. Thank you for clarifying. It's a follow-on motion. I also, I guess, wanted to know, and this is maybe sort of a larger philosophical question, is I believe we discussed this last year. I love ensuring that they're up to par. I also, I guess, wanted to know, do we see a need to increase the number of hours? We are allotting schools for family liaisons, parent liaisons. Dr. Duran, is this something that we are including in your plan? I think it's really important to both give them full benefits, but also to see, I know some schools are still trading out positions for additional parent liaison hours. Do we see a need to increase the number of hours? And to be able to help some of them maybe be more focused in less schools?
That was part of a larger plan that we had shared last year when we looked at, particularly when we're thinking about some of our schools that had increases in SCIF students and that type of thing. It was part of that plan.
And how do you think we are doing with that? I mean, this is for next year. So do we also need to look at for next year, obviously, is a bigger question, increasing the support in hours for parent liaisons? Or do you feel that where we are now is, I mean, I assume it's never...
I want to make sure.
So this follow-on motion is saying to have all parent liaisons who work an average of 20 to 24 hours per week, and I assume that's in any capacity with the schools, receive full benefits. Some of them do have, you know, office assistant positions and others. But I know some of our schools, at least before, were trading out some hours in order to keep their parent liaisons more focused in their school, to give them additional duties. So I guess in addition to doing this, I would like us to see, guess before next budget, how are we on hours allocated for schools? How many schools are still trading out positions? Or would we really like to have more of a dedicated parent liaison?
Sure.
I know we don't want to go full-time for a school to have more flexibility, but do we also need additional hours, not just...
Ms. Palchek?
Okay.
If you'd like to send me some language, I agree, that's an important question. I'd be happy to add that in.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, I don't see any other hands on this one. Happy to hear from anybody individually who wanted to talk with me about it, pro and con, any other suggestions. So going, moving down the list, Ms. Palchek has two amendments that she's sent us. Would you like to speak to them now?
I will do my best. Yes, so the first one is for, is an amendment to the main motion. We currently have most of our employees, as we had begun to do, I believe, 2009 as a school system, before my time on the board, we said we would focus on getting employees to living wage. So of our currently contracted employees, why don't I go ahead and read the motion and then I can talk to it. Adjusting the steps below the, adjusting the steps below the hourly living wage minimum, which is the FCPS minimum of 1,450 for the classroom instructional support scale and the food services pay scale to the hourly living wage minimum of 1,450. Thus, bringing all FCPS contracted employees at or above the hourly living wage. The financial cost of the living wage for food service workers will be absorbed within the Food and Nutrition Services Fund. So essentially, we have most of our employees, I know we, the budget question, I don't have the page in front of me, did answer this, I believe it was question 32...
It's question 35.
35, sorry, thank you. So question 35 on page 106 and 107. Page 107 has the charts, which shows at the living wage of 1,450, which is what FCPS currently has designated as our living wage, we have one PHA only who is below that and 564 food service workers. I believe that in conversations with Mr. Taylor, that Mr. Smith, Mr. Taylor said that that could be absorbed within the current, the existing budget for the food service workers, would bring them up, you know, to that living wage. Hopefully, I believe it said, you know, help our employees and boost morale. And I also believe very strongly in moving, in improvements that Mr. Taylor and his team are making toward real and better food for our kids. And I know that it is always a very competitive market for trained food service workers in this area. So hopefully can get us to the point where we really are recruiting and retaining our best food service workers. This would mean that steps one, two, and three, I believe, would all be at 1,450 for next year and that the follow-on motion, which I will present, will ask the superintendent to work with the county as we develop next year's budget so that we are, we are comparable with the county's living wage, which is currently a 1,483. So we are behind the county's living wage. If we were to go there now, the cost would be a bit more than double. It would be half a million dollars, but would include custodians. And if we were to go, as you can see, the last one is what MIT has calculated as the living wage for Fayette County, which I think we had some speakers refer to at the public hearing, would include quite a few more members. But that cost for that is $5 million. And I know does not include any of the other parts of compensation, but not something we can include at this time. So my main motion is that for next year, we move to have all of our employees at the 1,450 living wage. And then the follow-on motion will be that we work with the county early in the process next year to ensure that we're not falling, staying behind, but we're catching up to the living wage of the county. I think that's all I have to say. I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. Just a question on this, because I did read the MIT study and their living wage is based on the higher hourly rate needed so that people could pay for external health care. And so that's a fundamental difference between the workers here because our classroom instructional support, as well as all of our food service employees, actually do get the benefit of health care and retirement. And so I've asked, I would like to know what the value per hour of providing those resources to our, to the affected employees is, because I think that's something important to understand. Because with the food service, the one question I have is they qualify for full benefits at 15 hours per week. And so if you then take, so that's 60 hours a month on average, and the value of the health care per hour will certainly bring those salaries well above the living wage. So that would be one question I would like to understand a little bit more. And then the other is food services can absorb this, but will this result in an increase in the price of meals for our students? Because I know that we have increased the price of meals over the past couple of years.
So I will answer what I can, and then I will ask Mr. Smith. So just to clarify for the MIT study, and which is why I'm not recommending that we go to the full 1,680 at this time, it includes much more than medical. So medical is a small portion of it. It includes cost of food, housing, which is the highest cost, transportation. So it's quite a bit. But because, right, ours do include the benefits, I'm sure you know many of our food service employees and others are working three jobs, and from us, you know, we're able to often keep them, I believe, because we are offering the benefits. So from my perspective, I think it's important that we at least get to the point where we're matching the county that also provides benefits and so that we're able to be comparable with the county.
Do we know that the county is actually providing benefits to people that work 15 hours a week?
Ms. Corbett-Sanders, we're working with the county to get clarification on the number of hours. What I do have for, in terms of, I should say, the employees that are at a living wage, do they also get benefits? And that's the clarification we're trying to get. We do have a matrix from the county government. One moment. And what they do is they break out the benefits, of course, for their merit employees who are eligible for benefits. But they also have a classification of non-merit eligible employees who work anywhere from 1,040 hours up to 612 hours. They are not eligible for pension benefits. And then they have their temporary hourly employees that work below 900 hours. So those are the two groups that we're trying to get confirmation from the county as to whether they are eligible for the living wage that the county has set. So that's the clarification we're working on with them, and we're happy to provide that as a formal budget question response as well to the board.
So it would be helpful in response to that is to have a matrix that basically says how many hours
Yes.
it takes to qualify. What is their hourly rate, their hourly salary, as well as the cost of benefits, which would be added on to compensation. So we're looking at the total compensation. I don't have a problem. I just want to make sure that we're, if we're saying we're going to parity with the county, then we actually need to have the data to prove that we're going to parity with the county and not escalating things, going back and forth with, oh, well, you guys are doing it, now we have to do it, now you have to do it. So it's wanting to make sure that we're speaking with the same language.
Absolutely. We know the county went in this budget to a living wage of 1,483. They were at 1,450, and as part of their advertised budget, they increased that living wage by the same rate that their general employees were getting, the 2.25%. So that's how they got to the 1,483. What we don't know is which employees are actually eligible for pension benefits. Certainly, they have the ACA requirement, then anyone who meets, at least meets the 30-plus hours, they have to provide health. So that's the piece that we're trying to work on and connect those two pieces.
It's the people that are not working 30 hours and...
That's the clarification we need.
Mr. Moon? Will I come back to you?
Yeah, I'm forgetting what I was gonna say.
That's fine. Ms. Heinz? Ms. Schultz?
I am. So what I'm trying to get a grip on here is, and I think it's maybe back to Dr. Ramey, along the same lines as my IA comment earlier, but in combination with the point that Ms. Corbett-Sanders just brought up, if we, if we are attempting to be unmarket or whatever, you know, 95 to 105, and I don't know what the marketplace shows for a food service worker with full benefits and full benefits at, like, our kind of benefits versus maybe benefits, what benefits would cost or comparable benefits would cost out in marketplace, if they even exist. And this is a difference between, like, what would be nice to do and what is practical for us to be able to do for marketplace. I mean, I could just give food service workers $50,000 a year and it'd be easier for them to live, but I can't, I can't. I can't do that as a stewardship, as a steward of taxpayer dollars. So is this not akin to the earlier conversation around the IA, but actually even more so because we allow full benefits at 15 hours?
I lost your question halfway, halfway through, sorry.
So that's okay. Is not, is this not the same argument that we, we've already worked to get to parity with past moves on hourly wages, but that it's even more different here with adding the likely not comparable out in the marketplace, full benefits at a very low part-time?
No, I'm with you. Yes and no. Yes, in terms of it is comparable, as we did a market study, and so when we adjust that scale, it adjusts that piece. Why I think it's a little bit different is the board in the past has given us direction regarding living wage, separate from the comp study. And so I can see it from both directions. And when we've looked at the market, you know, we really, we have looked at the men, at the median, and then also at the max. But most of the conversation has revolved around the max at being at 95 to 105, not so much the minimum, as long as it wasn't below.
But is this intended to be a living wage job? Because, I mean, the whole purpose that I understood, the food service worker, that the way that we've crafted the benefit, the access to the benefits is quite often, these people are working their 15 hours just so they can get the benefits. So they're not working a 40-hour work week, and this is not at a, what this is doing is it's creating access into the marketplace for benefits that are definitely needed. But to expect the living wage for a part-time job on top of it, I don't know, I'm trying to reconcile how you achieve that, that outcome. Because really, what the goal was, is to create that opportunity for people who are working part-time as a, you know, second career, third career, that they're layering in that access to the benefits on top of it.
Well, I don't, I think that when we set our pay rates for our employees, we want to look at what we're doing as an organization for our employees. We really can't take into account that they might be working another job and that's contributing. I mean, we want to treat our employees appropriately and pay them a wage. And I think that looking at paying our employees the living wage when we can is something that we should try to do. Now, it is at odds with where the market study came in, but I don't think that we want to take into consideration that simply because some employees might be out working a second or third job, that we shouldn't ensure that those jobs are at the minimum wage.
Okay, when I said second or third, I said second or third career. I meant they, there may be, they may be, you know, a spouse of somebody who's working full-time
Or retired.
and they've retired from, whatever they're retiring from. Look, what I don't want to do is make the assumption that we can or can't do something based solely on what the market is. But what I also don't want to do is set an artificial goal that, to try to provide a living on 15 hours a week. I mean, that is not a reasonable expectation that the school system can shoulder the burden of somebody being able to afford to live in Northern Virginia on 15 hours a week. So there's this disparity between what we're looking to do and make opportunities. And I'm not sure what's going on over here, but it's distracting me. So I think the reality is, is that whatever can happen needs to come from staff that fits with the market and provides us the guidance, but that we keep in mind that we have, we have a lot of obligations that we're trying to attend to. And the main focus, frankly, I'd rather just outsource this. It's a comment that I've made, you know, frequently, is we're shouldering the burden that the marketplace has. And if we contracted out these services and got back to the business of focusing on the academic success of students in the classroom and maybe potentially paying IA's more because they're in the classroom, then we could get out of the business of not being in where our subject matter expertise is.
Can I go back to Mr. Moon?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Evans. I remember what I was gonna ask. Ms. Palchek, it's a point of clarification that if you... It's a point of clarification that if your motion passes, that my understanding is step one and step two and step three on Schedule H for food services workers will be lumped together at 1,450 in FI 19. My question goes to, my point of clarification goes to, what about following year? Do you expect all those three steps move together, or you expect three to go to four, but two and one to remain where they are at 1,450, unless there is a shift in the living wage? So that's where my question lies.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I guess I didn't provide the actual steps here, but I do, so next year it is correct, and staff, please correct me if I misspeak, is that for next year, the recommended, there were two options offered by, by staff. Option one, which I believe is a preferred option, and also the, half the cost of option two, is that steps one, two, and three would all be at 1,450. So essentially, you know, a slight hold scale, you know, hold steps, in a way, at the beginning, that would minimize the impact on the overall scale. And so for the first three, they would all go to 1,450, which I believe is an increase for all three of those, a slight one for step three, I don't have that in front of me, but that they would go to 1,450. And that, right, for the future years, if we go up to 1,483, then there will be a shift again. But so, at this point, unfortunately, we have to look at it year by year.
So if it doesn't go 1,483, if it stays at 1,450, I'm trying to see the difference between somebody who has two more years of work experience with us versus somebody coming in next year for the first time in step one, they are, they are going to be on the same step. In the following year, how are we gonna treat them? Are we gonna treat them the same way, or are you gonna differentiate the pay level amongst those three different steps? I mean, that's my question.
Yeah, and I'll let staff speak.
What you were intending, since you are the maker of the law.
I know, and this is, and this is quite complicated, and I had a few discussions with Mr. Smith, is what's the best way to do this? Obviously, somewhere down the road, we have to look at the full scale, and Dr. Ramey...
Or my suggestion could be, you know, since we still have another week to go, maybe you can give a little more thought, consultation with the staff, and if it, in your motion, if it could clarify that, what you are, because we need to also, for our food service employees, we need to give them our
Yes.
clear guidance as to where the board may go with our steps one to three in the following year, whether there are differentiation in pay, or are they all moving together.
Right. And I can give my thinking, and I will let Dr. Ramey speak, is, at this point, for next year, is, the goal is to get up to 1,450 for next year. And it seemed that the easiest, most cost-effective way to do that was to move all first three steps up to 1,450. For the following years, and I'll let Dr. Ramey speak, is, is I think we have to have that conversation. I didn't want to truncate that conversation. So if you have a suggestion, Dr. Ramey, please share.
Sure. As our work with Ms. Palczek, she's, she's right. We would look at all three steps at being at 1,450, and the out years, if we provided MSA, we would provide the MSA to that step, like all their steps, but we would not graduate those steps. We would keep them all at, at 1,450. So Mr. Moon's point, yes, if you came in with two years of service, you would be on step three making 1,450, but then you would step to the next step the following year, whereas someone that had one year of service or no years of service would stay on that same step. That feeds into Mrs. Schultz's point, we're looking at the scales. The reason we suggest that is because it keeps the integrity of the rest of the scale as we look at trying to meet the, the living wage, but also keep within the parameters of our compensation study. We don't have to raise the top while we can still bring up the bottom.
So basically, even though it's not the longevity, longevity step, but they will be treated if they are in the longevity step, where the step number three may be to graduate to step number four, step number two will go up to step number three, but on the, possibly with the same pay, but...
Yes, but if, but they would be eligible for the MSA.
MSA.
And so they would, they would see that increase
Correct, correct.
if it was granted.
Correct. Thank you.
Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, thank you. I just had a question. Isn't it the case that Food Nutrition Services pays for all of this, right? None of this ever comes out of operating budget? So in a way, we're already contracting out all of our food service workers and all of our food service business. I think, I think that's already true, right? I mean, it's not going through the operating budget of the school system. Anyway, I mean, I just point that out because when people talk about contracting out these services, I think we're already doing that, actually, because we're not paying for it in the operating budget of the school system. But be that as it may, I, it's my understanding that our food service workers work less than full-time, a lot of them, because those are the hours that are needed in the schools. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So they're, they're working 15 or whatever hours a week because that's all we need them for. And so they are going to a second job or even a third job, because, you know, even at 1,450 an hour, you can't live on that in Fairfax County, you know, and at whatever they're making now. So I don't, you know, I just kind of, maybe I'm taking issue with the idea that we have employees who would come, worked at just 15 hours to get benefits, when in fact, that's all we really offer them anyway. So, well, thank you, Ms. Palczek, for doing all this work. It is complicated. Thank you for biting it off. I would like to be able to support it, so I want to talk to you more about the details of it in the next few days. Thank you.
So I just had one question, clarifying question. I had thought, when I asked the question earlier about food service workers, that the benefits started at 20 hours. Is it 15?
It is 15 hours.
It's 15. What about for our bus drivers?
I believe it's, I believe it is 20 for, for our bus drivers.
It's 20 for the bus drivers and 15 for food service workers. Okay. If you could confirm that for me, I would...
Sure. There's kind of a, there's a, there's a, and these not here, but there's a formula associated with it, and so we will, we'll get some more detail on that for the different employee groups.
Okay. I appreciate that. So Ms. Palczek, again, just, I, I think I understood your explanation, but this would mean $200,000 would be coming from within the Food Nutrition Services budget, so it wouldn't, or...
Correct. And to answer Ms. Corbett Sanders' question from before, it will not have an impact on the cost or
Would not have.
the quality of the food, according to Mr. Taylor.
Okay, very good. Well, seeing no more questions. Mr. Moon, I think you are the last one who's sent something, and then we'll open it up for any other amendments anyone else has.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Evans. All your, I guess, latest afternoon, I sent to my colleagues a follow-on, this is strawman draft language, so that I could get a feedback from my colleagues. This is subject to change, that this one is coming from both myself and Ms. Evans, and I've been, I've been, I've spent the last several days talking with the board members and staff, et cetera, to see whether there is a way, after we adopt the final budget as a follow-on motion, to give us some guidance to superintendent, so that we could start discussing about BA, BA lane salary options. I wanted to do that because, as you all know, that this board has been very deliberate in making decision for the BA lane salary scale, that thus far, we've been only been able to make, if you, if I assume that the budget as a proposal is going to be adopted at the next meeting, that, that we are only, we've been only being, making BA lane decision just one year at a time. I think it's, I think we should give our BA lane employees, current employees and future employees as well, also school system itself, more certainty as to where we should be going, where we would be going. That's the whole purpose of this, and hopefully, our decision will be reflected in the superintendent's proposed for budget for FI 2020. I do not know exactly when superintendent will start crafting next year's proposed budget, but if the past is going to be any, any guidance, it could be sometime around October and November timeframe, then he's gonna have to put in a lot of the front budget items into his next year's proposed budget. So I am hoping to be able to make, for this board to make a decision by October, if not, if not October, at the latest by November timeframe. And we need to start discussing this earlier than later, and I'm hoping that we can have this discussion starting from September. You know, there are several options that I indicated in my strawman follow-on motion, but those are just strawman options at this point, based upon my conversation with some, you know, few board members at this point in time. So if I refer the public what it says, it's a follow-on motion after we adopt the budget. I moved at the school board director superintendent to provide in a September 2018 work session, potential future BA lane salary scale options, including, not limited to, but not limited to, options to grandfather, the BA lane teachers, starting from step 14, from step 16, and from step 18, for consideration, discussion, and adoption by the board. The superintendent is expected to present not only the cost of implementation of those options, but also the detailed analysis. Now, next sentence is very important for all of us. The superintendent is further directed to engage teacher associations while developing the options. Funds for any adopted options should be included in the FI 2020 proposed budget. I would entertain any questions and any comments my colleagues may have.
Okay. Um, I, oh, Mrs. Strauss, and Ms. Palczek, did you have, okay, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. I thank Mr. Moon for offering this as a follow-on motion. There does seem to be a, sort of a mid-level, somewhere between step 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, where in fact, a grouping of, of our teachers have not benefited from some of the increase, salary increases. And that's where we need to be able to see where that, where that spot is. So I appreciate bringing this forward. I do intend to support it, and, and we were looking, we had asked the superintendent to come back with a plan to give us another look at how to address the BA lanes. So I think with the information that Mr. Moon was asking for, and working with the various teacher groups, I think it'll give us the opportunity to, to bring better salary alignment to those who have missed the opportunity for some increases that we've provided the last couple of years. So, thanks.
Ms. Palczek?
Yes, thank you. I also want to thank Ms. Evans and Mr. Moon for bringing this over. I had a brief conversation about this with Ms. Evans, and I guess since we're making this a follow-on motion, I know originally we did ask staff to go ahead and bring us a plan. I know it does say, including but not limited to options. I would prefer that we started to look, at least at step 10. I know Ms. McLaughlin also asked that question. I would also like, when we are not considering specifically salary, that we also look at alternatives for tuition reimbursement, or frankly, other options. I know the, the associations are doing their study now, so that we don't have that information in the recommendations. This is coming from very limited conversation. So I appreciate that it says in there to engage with the teacher associations. I know that some of the frustration in the past has come from that engagement, perhaps coming a bit late in the process. So if we are turning this into follow-on motion, I, I want to be clear, my original recommendation, that it include our current or upcoming budget chair and vice chair, as well as staff and the associations. I just think it's easier from the beginning to hear what the recommendations are, what teachers would like to see, and to figure out what the cost is, what can afford, and what we move forward. So, I mean, I'm, we just saw this motion, this language today, so I'm sorry that I can't provide specific language to it, but I would like to see it go as far down as step 10 or lower, and to include overall compensation, so to look at options beyond salary when we're not providing salary, and to really include, I also think when school board hears about the options a bit late, it gives us less time to really fully understand them and the impact and moving forward. So I would prefer to see combined effort, whether it's a task force or just combined work between school board associations and staff. So I'm happy to provide that, but wanted to, to share my thinking on that, and if you'd like to...
I would just say, I've started to talk with the associations a little bit about this, and we can do some summer discussion. You know, as you, as you know, I arrived in July and learning that the budget here needs to really get done sooner than later. So we can do work this summer to take the spirit of this and work with associations, and also provide basically the spirit of this too, which is a menu of things for the board to look at, well before I would present a budget in December. So I certainly support this, and we can do engagement with both board members and associations.
Okay. Ms. Kees-Gamar?
I mainly just wanted to say that I support this effort, and I appreciate the motion coming forward, and I certainly want to look at ways that we can grandfather in, I think, some of those, those employees that we're not, we were not able to address in, in our previous revision. So I, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Arneak Kropex?
Just the same, that I, I support this, I appreciate it. I think it's, it's something we need to do. I concur with my colleagues that we need to, and I know Dr. Braybrand will do this, to include all of our teachers' associations as we move forward, and I like the way it's laid out right now, with exploring 14, 16, and 18. So, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Kees, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, and thank you to Mr. Moon and Ms. Evans for putting this forward and to, and for reaching out to each of us in advance to kind of get our thoughts on this. I am fully supportive of the focus of it being step 14 and above, because I understand, and maybe Dr. Braybrand, you can confirm, but in my memory, I thought that the steps below that had been addressed with our earlier infusions of money, right?
Right. When we come back, yes, we'll, we'll have that analysis, so the board will be able to see what's been done in the past at the various steps.
I think that would be very helpful. The only thing that I would possibly introduce into this, and I had sent this to Mr. Moon earlier today, is actually putting a statement in there requiring board action by a date certain, so that it actually sets an objective for each of us at the board to make a decision on this prior to the December work, or the December presentation of the budget by the superintendent. And so I would actually add, and adoption by the school board prior to the superintendent's proposed budget being released.
Absolutely. I think it even has to be much earlier than
Yeah, I would too.
By the time superintendent releases budget, it will be too late. So I am going to, I mean, I received your email, your comments, I appreciate it, but since this was the language I had earlier in the morning, that I was gonna wait until what I hear from, you know, board members, and so that I could go back and
Okay.
and modify as needed.
I appreciate it.
And I kept that in mind. Maybe I might wanna put with a goal of adopting by a certain timeframe.
That would be appreciated.
Because I don't wanna, I don't wanna buy my...
Because I think that we need to be disciplined in our work as well, and by setting clear goals and objectives for ourselves, it's always helpful.
So we have spent two years on this one, I guess. I don't wanna spend another two years.
Ms., oh, Ms. Schultz? Were there any other comments or questions on this? If not, then, oh, we can go to another topic. Mrs. Schultz?
So I don't know if you're able to bring up the response to my budget question on this one, which is... this one, which is, it was just answered on May 2nd.
Do you have a page number, or a-
I'm looking. It actually, I think it was the first budget question, so it's on page 101. So, on the, not a fan of kicking the can down the road, this BA lane, the first time I brought this up, I think, was shortly after we passed the budget last year, and it first came to our attention. And in looking at the impacted BA lane employees, there's a subgroup within the BA lane employees that is most particularly, I think, at risk. And it's because there are, are, how do you say this, more seasoned, more seasoned employees? There are older employees who have predominantly, can you slide down to the table, predominantly more experience, a lot more experience, and are also in the ERFC legacy program. So the ERFC 2001 is like payment basically until you're dead, you know? The ERFC legacy is not. And so when you look at this, you have BA lane employees who, and I think I did the calculation, I think 100, if you could slide down a little further, on the right-hand side, there's 127 employees who fall within this category. I'm not exactly sure, and I didn't enter into the discussion on the other motion about, in the fall, look at, at step 14, and step 16, and step 8. The vast majority are step 23 to longevity, or a, a majority. And then you, there's kind of spread out along the way, and these are obviously like second or third career people, because there's one that only has five years. I'm not trying to, you know, pull out individual statistics. But most are, are, you know, in that 15 years and beyond. So long-term employees, they're seasoned employees, they're probably educational leaders in their, in their buildings. And they're, they're the ones who we need to be as anchors and mentors for the teachers that we have coming in. And they're also in the ERFC legacy program. So I, I don't want to wait. I think they've been waiting for a clear message for, from us, basically ever since the, the budget was passed last year. And I would like us to make a demonstrable step. I, I think follow-on motions can come off as platitudes, that we'll get around to fixing you later. And I don't want to do that. And there are, there's definitely a larger set of BA lane employees that we could work on, but I think we have to make the first effort, and we got to do it now. And a year and a half after it's first brought to our attention, that the policy of aligning and doing the 95 to 100, and fix, and beginning to move over to the new lanes, and the fact that the reclassification is still not done, this, all this time later, that's all well and good, but the reality of this on the ground is that we have teachers who are 18, 19, 20 years in, who are currently acting as frankly mentors for our younger teachers, are handling the workload, are adapting to the new assessment system. And if those are the ones that are under the old ERFC legacy program, are getting the message from us that we're still going to shrug our shoulders, and we'll get around to some point in the fall, having a work session, and eventually maybe fix it, I, I just, I, I have a problem with it. The, like I said at the outset, when this first came up, there was a difference between when you're a new employee and you come into the system, you know, 20 years ago, and us saying, we have tuition reimbursement, and oh, by the way, if you ever get a master's, you'll earn more money. And those, those teachers arriving at a point in their career that they didn't get their masters, and the tuition reimbursement went away, but they were okay with that because they didn't get their masters, and they made their life choices, and they're raising their own families. And then at the end, pulling the rug out and saying, oh, by the way, you didn't go get your masters, and now we're freezing your pay. That, that's a whole different outcome for me, that I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with. And frankly, for the ones that are in steps, you know, 15 and beyond, they, they're likely sending their own children to college. And to say, like I said earlier, there's no requirement that the masters that we're talking about has to be content-specific, to say you have to go earn your masters in order to get out of this, the, the freeze lane, is at the same time that they're, they're sending their own children to college. And I, I, I just, it's not consignable for me to say that that's their only choice, is to get out of it, is go ahead, and at the 60-year-plus mark, you need to be going and getting a master's. So I'd like to grandfather these 127. I did, I did consider, at the top of the list, there's a few sprinkled up that are only step, you know, five or eight, but I, I couldn't say, okay, we'll only do 122 out of the 127, not, not do those few. So-
Is this an amendment you're planning to bring?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to get clarification. I'm, I'm looking at this. I'm not sure exactly what I'm looking at. The, the one, the, on the left and on the right, what, you're differentiating between those, which pension plan they're-
No, they're all the, they're all the same. They're all the same. They're just, on the left, I mean, maybe Chase can, or somebody over there can do a better explanation. But the ones on the right are the legacy, it's the 127 down at the bottom. So they're, it's where they are in their step, plus being in ERFC legacy.
So the ones on the right are a subset of the ones on the left?
That's correct.
And, and the others on the left are those in a different pension plan?
Those are the post, so that's the ERFC 2001. So they're in a better financial position.
I see. Okay. Thank you. I have Ms. Darnett Kofax to be followed by Mr., oh, sorry, Mr. Moon. Mr. Moon?
Okay, so should we expect something in writing from you, so that I could consider? Because if I, if I misunderstood you, just correct me, that your follow-on motion is basically saying that grandfather 127 individuals that in the, in response to question number 31, is that, is that, is that basically, I think you-
Yeah, yes, it responds to, it responds to 31. It's on the right side-
127 individuals.
They're in the legacy plan. I didn't feel like peeling off the top.
Right.
I don't know whether it's going to be follow-on or not, depending on the language from staff. We'll have to see.
Okay, so 127 individuals, that's what you're referring to?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so, you know, I would love to see, you know, what you, what you put down, and then consider, go from there. I'm not sure whether I'm there yet, but I want to see the language first, and what, I'll have a further discussion with the staff to see what the implications might be, because that's individual-specific. Because you make a distinction between somewhere who is age 60 versus 59. You're going to be making those distinctions.
So these are going to be people that, so as opposed to age-specific, it's more situational-specific, and that they're the closest to the retirement with the, with the ERFC legacy plan?
I'm only looking at the response, because it mentions age, 60-plus. So, okay, so I'll have a conversation with the staff once I see the language from you.
Do you have a cost on this yet? So, but you've put that into staff to cost out? Excellent. Okay. Ms. Sein?
Yeah, I was going to ask that, ballpark on cost. So if you don't have that yet, that's fine. Also, I guess I would like to know how, you know, we're going to pay for it, like where that money would come from. So I'll be looking for that, too.
All right. If there are no more questions on Ms. Schultz's amendment, are there other amendments that other people are considering or working on with staff? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Madam Clerk has been-
Sorry, Ms. Evans?
Oh, yes.
And I may have, Mrs., I apologize, Ms. Schultz. For your amendment, are you saying this would replace the grandfather step we are adding for next year and expand it, or this would be in addition to?
It would pu, it would pull those out, and just begin the work now, as opposed to delaying it for next year.
But so it would include everything we've already committed to on that, in addition to this, or the people who would be included on that, who are not in the legacy plan, would not be included? I don't know if that makes sense.
It would just grandfather the legacy plan people now.
And not do what we agreed to, the one additional step would not happen?
No, it would for them now. Like, it, it would just, it would just assert that the grandfathering for these legacy folks happened now, because we've said we're going to get around to looking at this for next year of what we're going to do. But we don't know, and as Mr. Moon, like, I had not seen, when I was working on this with staff, I had not seen Mr. Moon's follow-on. And what that does is that it takes the whole subset and moves them to the fall, to a work session. And because of the situation that this particular set is in, I just feel that it's better to begin the work now.
So to clarify, my understanding is we have committed for next year to do one grandfather step for all employees affected by the BA lane change. We have committed to that for next year. And the follow-on is that early in the year, we make a, a long-term plan for how we will move forward beyond next year's budget. So is your amendment saying we will take back that commitment to the grandfather step for all of those BA lane employees for next year, and replace it with only the ERFC employees?
No. No. And we'll, I'll get the language to you.
Ms. Strauss?
Yeah, I just heard, Ms. Schultz, so your concern is 127 people who are 60 years old, 60 years old or older. So tell me again, you're adding a step, adding, I, I've kind of missed how you're, what you're going to do with the 127.
Restoring them to the way they were in the lanes, and not putting them into the freeze step.
Okay, I guess I'll have to wait for, because I'm having a hard time visualizing that.
I know.
And this is based on their age?
It's, it's the combination. It's in combination with the legacy program.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Ms. Keys-Gamar?
Ms. Schultz, I just wanted to ask, did you have a cost for that?
No, we just said the staff is working on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that completely. Thank you.
So the clerk has been keeping track of our budget questions. Obviously, everybody can ask the budget questions that they want, but I would suggest if you could send that to board members, and then we could simply look over it and see if, if what we ask today is included in that, and if anybody feels they need to reword it, or if there was something that wasn't captured, please get that just as soon as possible to the budget staff. Mr. Moon?
Madam Budget Chair, I have a question for guidance.
Okay.
Your guidance on this one.
All right.
That I think we may want to set a deadline to submit the final language of any amendment, so that it can be posted for public.
Okay.
I, could I suggest like a noon Tuesday is the finer time?
That's typically what we, we ask for board members to do. So if, if at all possible, let's submit our final language after we've talked with colleagues. And of course, there are some people waiting for answers to questions, so that will have to be turned around fairly quickly. Is there any concern that staff has about being able to answer the questions that people have asked for by, by next week? Again, board members can, can look it over when Ms. Mulberg has sent them to us, and if there are any additions or corrections, just get that to them. So, Dr. Braybrand, were you trying to get my attention to say something, or?
No.
No, not at all? Okay, all right. You're, you're ready to, to wrap it up. Okay.
I was excited. We had a great discussion today, and we look forward to being ready to assist you all as you have the budget work session, approve the budget for next Thursday.
All right. Thanks to everyone for your thoughtful comments, and this work session is adjourned.